Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming tonight for this town hall meeting. Just, I want to go quickly through the layout really quickly. We will start with me. We'll do just an opening prayer. There's a gospel that I want to read and just take a moment to hear and not to reflect. It's no homily, don't worry. Then I will go through the PowerPoint presentation. We'll have some time for questions. This is going to be recorded. It's not livestreamed. It's going to be recorded and put up sometime this week so that everyone can view it who could not be here tonight. The slides and the letter that is going in the bulletin will be put up as well so everyone can go back and study and read all of that information that you want to read that I've been studying for a year, over a year now. We'll have some time for questions and answers. When it comes time for the questions, we'll have a microphone. It's going to be brought to the center mainly for the recording purposes. It's just easier. So we're going to ask you kindly to come up one at a time if you have a question and state the question. I'm going to be sitting right there. I'll get up and answer it and we'll just continue on. And then have a closing prayer and we'll move forward. Okay? That's unokay to everyone. Good process. I think we have a fair agenda here. So I just wanted to start with a thank you again to everyone who is here tonight, to everyone who helped in this process, the Diocese of Scranton, the team led by Anne Marie Colley and all of her facilitators and helpers. And everyone here throughout history who have built up and brought us to this moment here in the city of Carbondale and Simpson. So we begin in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. The Lord be with you. Take a reading from the Holy Gospel. "The eleven disciples went to Galilee, to the mountain to which Jesus had ordered them. When they saw him, they worshiped, but they doubted. Then Jesus approached and said to them, All power in heaven and on earth have been given to me; go therefore and make disciples of all nations. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, teaching them to observe all that I have commanded you; and behold, I am with you always until the end of the age." The Gospel of the Lord. Just an overview. Meeting in November. Council. We had both, from both parishes, we had combined meetings. So all of the finance councils, both of them from St. Rose and Our Lady of Mount Carmel, and the parish council, the joint council from both parishes have met four times the last time that we had the town hall meeting. We've had the five-year parish life to fit and we looked at ports in detail and in great depth. So a lot of time here. The results of our conversations basically this presentation. Okay? So I didn't pick this out of thin air. This was conversation. We divided into small groups at our meetings and we, there were members from each council and each parish that were there, that were in each group. And we had facilitators from the dioceses and from another parish that came up to help facilitate the conversation. A large group, some information, they shared it with me. And we did that for different sections, each church building, each parish. So a lot of information and a lot of data, looking at all of the aspects of Carbondale, the city of Simpson, the general demographic, what I like to refer to as the 18407. It just encompasses, right? And we studied it. We had, we looked at the homework. We, you know, did those kinds of things. A lot has gone on in this presentation. And from that, those meetings, this is. "Vision 2030 process is a long-range pastoral process planning for the Diocese of Scranton. While looking proactively at the realities of our local church in the present moment, this process strives to meet the opportunities and the challenges of the coming decade in order to create a vibrant expression of parish life rooted in the life of Jesus." Vision 2030. Few time and time again over the past months and past years. You know, there was a booklet that was put out by the diocese with some statistics. They will be all. This is not something that was just necessarily, like I said, pulled out of thin air. This is of where we are. So the four disciples listed in Vision 20. When we had our conversation. The priests. The finances. So it wasn't like a one-pronged, oh, look at this picture. And looking at it from every angle in all different directions, turning it on its side, turning it upside down, turning it around. So just where we. Carbondale is the fourth. We. Is 1832. It's on the cornerstone. I found that one out. That was, that was no problem. I got that one. The parish is. Ninth. The church burned and then it was rebuilt. 1911. To St. Michael's, three. Currently here. I was two-thirds of the way back at the meeting, at the 100. 2003 for the mass of St. Michael's with my. So I remember it vividly. Bishop Doherty was here. A hundred years ago, there were roughly 20,000. Carbondale proper from statistics. What we have, great pictures of the feast. God bless you, Skippe. We have a very rich history and a very rich tradition of culture, of life, of family, of service. And we have this because we are dedicated to the gift of Jesus Christ. And Jesus Christ is at that center of our lives. And we know we have those different ethnic groups, right? Because we came from all over and we settled in our little community. Every church had the priest that spoke that language. Our Lady of Mount Carmel, the Italian, Polish, here at St. Michael's, English at the Irish Church, at Our Lady, St. Rose. Slovak at, Slovak at Holy Trinity. So in every little spot had church. And because there were the people that spoke that language. Obviously, we know some things have changed over a hundred and some years as we all kind of mostly speak English now, give or take a little bit. Father Mosley, it's questionable. He didn't think I was going to go a whole night without throwing a little something that his way. This is where we are now. This was roughly, give or take 8,800 people living in the city of Carbondale. This was from the census statistic in 2020. We have two parishes, St. Rose and Our Lady of Mount Carmel, and one additional worship site here at St. Michael's that serves the 18407. We have one combined office that was done 2017-ish with Father Jim Price. I was here for that as well, in case you're wondering. That was my first time around. We have five cemeteries based at Our Mother of Sorrows in Finch Hill, St. Rose, Our Lady of Mount Carmel, St. Michael's, Holy Trinity, and of course, Our Lady, Our Mother of Sorrows. Currently, we have two priests, myself, Father Mosley, the senior priest, and Deacon Pat. And currently for the summer, we have Deacon Bill, a seminarian. He's over there. Wave to Deacon Bill. There you go. You'll be seeing him around a little bit for the summer. He's here with us until the end of July. So much like Deacon Michael Boris, God willing, he'll be ordained a priest next year and we're here to help him and teach him a few things. You, not me, because you don't, it's not good if I teach him a few things. Some of our parish activities. Now, this is not a complete list, okay? This is just a couple of random things that I know that we do and we do it well. Food sales. Tomorrow, the altar rosary starting the taralli sale, one of my personal favorites. So, you know, if you have a, if you want a little snack, there's only, but I'm sure we can sneak you in. I know some people here. Lady of Mount Carmel, July 13th, 14th, and 15th, and the mass and procession on the 16th of July. We have some raffle tickets. We have a great altar rosary that functions so well. St. Rose and St. Michael's, we have, it's, we have the. Bless them, helped to tar. And we have the Hibernians that help out and do so many great things in our community. Combined, we know we have the great community meal that serves over 170 meals a week this past, recently. That number has continued to climb as we go to the high rises, as we continue to serve the needs of our people here in Carbondale. A newly formed group is the Marian Society focusing on social prayer and service. They had their first event last week and they will have some continuing events moving forward focusing on, again, that prayer, that social aspect. Hopefully, a little wine mixer in the fall, but that's just my idea. And some service to the community. We have Joint CCD, which happens here in this building in the basement. We have those classrooms that Father Price put in, roughly 2018, 2019, somewhere in that area, maybe 17. Don't quote me on the dates. It's getting fuzzy now. I'm getting old, you know? Not as old as Father Mosley, of course, but you know, nevertheless. So we, we have some great things that we're working on. We have some great things that we do to help serve our people and to share the love of Jesus Christ by building disciples and sharing love. Won't be the last time you hear that one. So these would be the numbers that you saw in February, the parish life statistics. Now, don't memorize the families count so well. We, we got some more information on that one. But we did have 26 baptisms, 16 first communion, 16 confirmations, and 203 funerals. You would have seen this information back in November as well. The average parish in the Diocese of Scranton has 33 funerals. So that's a little bit more in case you're doing some math there. Our Lady of Mount Carmel, 756 families, seven baptisms, three first holy communion, three confirmations, and 38 funerals. Those are just facts. We count them. We count everything. I count everything. You should know this by now. Where are we now with religious ed? This number was also shared with us here in November, but a steady decline, partly pandemic, partly just lack of people coming to church, a whole slew of things. It's hard to pinpoint one decisive, but we're, you know, from 2000 to 2022, we're holding pretty well. I don't have this year's number. We'll have that eventually, but you see the general trend here. It's holding somewhere around that 119, 120. So that's a good thing we're holding. But even with that, we have some really great participation. You know, we were able to do a lot of good things. First holy communion is pictured there from last year with Father Arun, their enrollment here for this year. So, you know, we still have some nice sized classes, but there's more. We can always do more. Collections. This was just a highlight. We listed those collections. We'll list them every week, just about. Sometimes we are off a little bit because of the bulletin deadlines, but this is just to see the general trend in collections has gone down. The top line is combined. The middle line is green. It's hard to see a little bit, but it's St. Rose and the bottom line is Mount Carmel. That's just based off of number. Okay? So that's just the way the chart is set up. That's collection. When we look at total revenue and total expense, we see, these are things like if somebody donates a gift or like if somebody has a funeral set or there's a, you know, a memorial of somebody, that's what adds to that. So that's why there's a difference between total revenue and total collection. There's a few other things that are thrown in there. But as you can see, total expenses dropped during the pandemic and then they went back up to about where they are. That's arguably what we call reality. That's just what it costs to run these places and these staff and all of these buildings and all of the programs that we do currently. So this number, this is brand new. This is what I put together here for you. This just shows, this is fact. These are the bills from the year. Now, I know this is hard. Everyone, you're going to be able to see this and you're going to be able to like look at this online, so you don't have to memorize everything. But I broke it down into, this is just to keep the buildings open, just so everyone's aware. So heating, lighting, insurance, water, and plowing, because we live in the Northeast. We have to include that. So St. Rose, the rectory is St. Rose Rectory and Office. Our Lady of Mount Carmel is for the church. St. Michael's is for the church and the convent is the rectory right here where the sisters live. So as you can see, if you go down to the bottom figure here, oh, I also just broke out the insurance for the rectory and insurance for the church at Our Lady of Mount Carmel, but we still have to pay the total. So every month at St. Rose, just to keep the buildings open and functioning, we have to pay $9,255. And for Our Lady of Mount Carmel, it's $2,981 just to keep the buildings open, to make sure everyone's semi-warm in the winter. I think we did a pretty good job this year, but. So this is, this was never put out like this before. So this is something new. I was shocked myself when I saw that. One of the reasons that St. Michael's heating is so high, it has propane. Everyone else is on natural gas from the city. There is no natural gas here. They didn't come across this side. So we're kind of stuck. So again, I encourage you to, when we post this online, please look at these numbers just to see them. I don't expect anyone to memorize these numbers right off the bat. Okay? These are just general monthly expenses. So what we do is we separate payroll by, instead of saying like this person works half here and half here, we broke out three people that work at, we pay out of Mount Carmel and we broke out a few people, I can't remember exactly how many, that are paid out of St. Rose. St. Rose is bigger. More people are paid out of St. Rose. I did not set this up. This was here when we got there, but it's been working, so I thought it was good just to continue it. Are there better ways to do this? Probably, but we don't have five accountants that can separate payroll and move things over, so that kind of stuff. So this is the easiest way to do it. But when we look at the monthly assessment, that's from the dioceses. That's what we have to pay based on our collection for Catholic schools, our Catholic school assessment, and for cathedraticum and a few other things, clergy wellness, yada, yada, yada. So just again, to maintain buildings and the staff that you see, these are, that's what we need every month and that's what we need every year. This does not include sacristis expense, rectory expense, and office expense. So there's more to this. This is just buildings and people, which people are important. Staff is important. Being able to do projects and do ministry is important. Having buildings is important. So it's, but it's to see, to highlight what things cost and to see that it's expensive. But it's worth it. It's still expensive. But also to share this information with you, because I feel like it may have never been shared with you before. So to be as transparent as possible, I see this all the time. I'm used to this. Not everyone is. And you know, that's what we're trying to do and that's what I've been trying to do over the course of these months and this past year, is try to again, be as transparent as possible and as upfront as possible with the reality of what we are. These are actual numbers. So when we engaged the group, we engaged in a group from Philadelphia, an architectural group, an engineering group, we looked at deferred facility costs over the next 10 years. St. Rose, St. Michael's is about $2.8 million over the next 10 years that should be done. For Mount Carmel, it's $1.4 million. Now. You know, some, a few, a few of the comments during our meetings were, well, that number seems high, that number seems low, do we really need to do this? And that's fair enough. They were legitimate points. As I like to say, even if that number is off by $2 million, it's still $2.5 million that we need to work on over the next 10 years or so. And again, not that everything needs to happen at once and not that, you know. The roof is going to fly off and need to be replaced tomorrow, but if we want to keep preventative maintenance and keep the buildings in looking good and in actual good shape, some of these things will need to be done. So the parish debt. Between St. Rose and St. Michael's, there is a debt of $337,000. So that is mainly back assessments, so that is non-interest bearing. Basically, we didn't pay the dioceses. It happens. $37,000 of that is still from the steeple project, but that is, that is interest bearing, but that will be paid off within two or three years. So the diocese is working with us. It's a small monthly payment. It's not anything crazy and the interest rate is like 3%. So it's not anything insane. It's worth keeping and not putting the money toward it right now, but paying it off slowly over the course of the next few years. We have cash on hand. This is just to be as upfront as possible with all you. So St. Michael's and St. Rose does have about $200,000 on hand, but again, if something breaks, if a pipe breaks, it's not $500 for us. It's usually $3,000 or $4,000 for us because we're just on a much larger scale. Okay? And Mount Carmel has about $136,000. So, but not anything near the $2.5 million that we need. Basically, we could pay our debts if we have to. We're not going to right this second. We will eventually, but not right now. So we have to keep some cash on hand for payroll, for anything that happens, anything that breaks, anything that we want to do. And again, some of that is just being as transparent as possible with everyone. There is a deficit at Our Lady of Mount Carmel through the third quarter from our projected budget of about $23,000 for this year. That is including the money from the feast from last year. There is a surplus of $29,000 from St. Rose from the quarter. If we put them together, it's about a $6,000 surplus, which is a good thing. We budgeted well. And, you know, in that sense, we're doing okay because all of current bills are met. We have no additional debt from the diocese from March of last year. So we were able to pay a few things off. We were able to keep current, which is the best thing because if we start to not be current, it just keeps accumulating very quickly. As you saw, the monthly assessments for St. Rose was $20,000 a month and for Our Lady of Mount Carmel is roughly $10,000, give or take a little bit when you add everything together. I mean, that accumulates very quickly. And that's how St. Rose and St. Michael's was able to accumulate $300,000 of debt very quickly. So I know I told you before, those numbers from the parish life statistics, when we did the stewardship program through OSV, Building Disciples, Sharing Love, we thought we had roughly 2,120 parishioners, families at St. Rose and 756 families at Our Lady of Mount Carmel. What we realized was that of those numbers, 776 from St. Rose support the parish of St. Rose and St. Michael's at some point throughout the year and 332 at some point support the parish of Our Lady of Mount Carmel throughout the year. Roughly 300, 292 support regularly of St. Rose. That's more on the weekly or monthly basis. The people who support it over the year might be someone who's here at Christmas, might be someone who's here at Easter or someone who's here, if they're at the lake over the summer, they may come down. So we were able to get some of this data from OSV. This is hot off the presses. This just came in, in basically the month of May when we got the OSV numbers from our statistics. So this was very eye-opening to me. I was very shocked by this. When you look at it. You know, roughly 1,800 households receive envelopes, but you see who contributes regularly. Now, the plus, the first quarter from this year, so the January through March, the mass attendance on average over the course of both parishes, all three churches, increased by 5%. That's good. That's very good. To see a 5% increase in a quarter is excellent. We know we did the Building Disciples, Sharing Love program, which was rather successful. We know combined, we have a pledge of $89,000, which will be greatly helpful to some of that bottom line, as you saw. We had 13,000 in one-time gifts. You already seen these numbers. They were in the bulletin. And we had 445 parishioners respond in support. That's roughly the active, regular givers essentially. It can go up or down a little bit, but that's about where we are. And statistically speaking, it's a little bit higher than a third. So a third support regularly, a third support occasionally throughout the year, and a third don't support. Now, it's okay that someone doesn't support, but still comes to church because that's what we're here for. We're here to bring Jesus to them and offer Jesus for them. But this is just the reality. And as I say, you know, these are just where we are. This is where we are. I can't change and magically make this different. This is where we are. This is the reality. So where are we going? Well, this is the chart projected by the diocese. This was in that Vision 2030 program that you would have gotten and we've posted this throughout in the bulletin once or twice. By 2030, it's projected that there will be 62 priests in the Diocese of Scranton. That number is now high. It will be lower. 55-ish, if not lower. So it's very drastic right now. Thankfully, we have 24 and priests, like our Father Arun, who has been here to help us and serves for city now. But this is a drastic statistic. It's here. So what are our options? Well, we do nothing. We can't do nothing. We can't. We can't sit here and do nothing because everything will close around us. That's just the reality. Option number two. We consolidate to one parish with one church this year. I don't think that's the answer either. I think that's a little too drastic, a little too fast. If you're looking purely at numbers, that's your best option. It's like purely financial, purely number-wise, that is your best option. But we're not looking at purely numbers. We're looking at people. We're looking at families. We're looking at communities. We're looking at bringing Jesus Christ to one another. Okay? We're shifting from maintenance into mission. And that's going to be hard. That's going to take some time and it's going to take some years and we're going to build and we're going to work on it. We're going to. We're going to stumble a little bit. I didn't become a priest to run five cemeteries, three buildings, two buildings down in Archibald, five, three, two cemeteries down in Archibald, basically to have 20, 30 employees and be a property manager. Came to bring Christ to the people. We came to share the love of God with one another in service, in community, and in love. And we do that. But we need to change how we're going to do that so that we can grow. And you know, I was thinking about this. Our ancestors built brick and mortar. Blood, sweat and tears went into the building of these buildings, right? Our generation, us, will put our blood, sweat and tears into moving forward in this new endeavor that we're going to see in one second. I'm building the anticipation for you purposely. But we will be able to embrace this new reality that is coming. And, you know, looking back, if we do nothing, at one point, the doors will just close. There'll be nothing else we can do. Right now, we are truly looking at vision and planning to say, this is the way we want to move forward. This is the way that we want to help build and bring Jesus Christ to this community here in the Diocese of Scranton, the great Carbonell area, the 18407, the great gift of bringing Jesus Christ to the masses. Option number three, a several-phase approach that consolidates the 18407 to one parish with two churches over this next calendar year, ending in June of 2024. Why June of 2024? It's fiscal year. That's just the way my brain operates. So the multi-phase approach. I think that's, yeah, this is my gauge. This is a way of sharing, a way of walking with each other, helping one another, leaning on one another, truly being part of this family, helping share that love of Jesus Christ. So phase one, fall, winter of 2023. So that would be this fall coming up. Create a multi-use space in the family center of St. Rose with movable walls for CCD classrooms and meeting spaces. So basically just have some available space to have meetings, some classrooms and all of that stuff at the basement of St. Rose. Begin meeting with the transition team to form a one parish in Carbonell, one parish community. Moving forward, we'll spend time with the transition team. Everyone will have their input of the new name of the new parish community. We've just been affectionately calling it Little Flower. We'll go into why we've been calling it Little Flower. But instead of just calling it the new entity, the new entity, the new entity, we, Father Mosley and I just put a name to it. We just said Little Flower Parish. Whatever it will be, we'll be fine. We'll work on it together. But for now, moving forward, I will refer to it as Little Flower Parish. That's the new entity. Okay? Yeah, okay, good. So as we move into phase two, basically, the current pastoral council and finance councils will transition to what I call the transition team. So we'll be working together as a leadership to put forth a plan, looking at different celebrations and, again, naming. There is some, you know, backend stuff that we have to worry about when it comes to these things, like a new EIN number, new letterhead, new website, all of those kinds of things. So like that, we need some time to work on all of that. So I'd like to have the new name by January. So basically, the fall will be really put forth to working toward a new name and engaging the communities and looking and planning some liturgies. The second half will be more on the internal side for us. But again, still having conversations and how we can move forward, sharing that and building the love of Jesus Christ with ministries. So the spring of 2024, it would be to close St. Michael's worship site at the end of CCD, having a closing ceremony, having a closing mass here, moving the Blessed Sacrament down to St. Rose, the building that is, the current parish that it is part of. In June, consolidating St. Rose and Our Lady's Mount Carmel into one parish community, but keeping the churches of St. Rose and the Church of Our Lady's Mount Carmel open. In July, form a new parish community, Little Flower. We're just calling it that. It could be anything. I'll say that again. It could be anything, but I like Little Flower. In the summer of 2024, we're going to explore options for St. Michael's property, see if we can share it with another faith community, look at possibly selling it. We're going to explore many, many options. It's not that things are just going to go away. It's going to magically disappear. We're going to, and I'll keep you informed of everything that is going on over the course of this year. And then after moving forward, to continue to reevaluate the new parish community and the structures because we can't just stop and say, okay, everything's fixed. We need to keep looking at where we are because new realities may be coming in. A parish may be linked with Carbonell in the surrounding area. As the number of clergy continue to dwindle, we may be pulled farther. Like for the past five months, I've been the administrator of Archibald down there two or three times a week. Thankfully, Father Michael has been there to help with daily masses and weekend masses and Father Plednak. But basically, it's, it's very taxing going back and forth and dealing with the administration down there as well. So how will we build on the mission of Jesus Christ by building disciples and sharing love? How will we continue to embrace this program of stewardship, of giving of our time and our talent, giving of our prayer and of our commitment to the church, to the people of Jesus Christ, sharing that mission, being reminded that He is with us always? Even His disciples were afraid that day on the mountain. But He said, "Go out. You are My disciples and bring and teach those disciples in My name, sharing that love. And know that you are not alone. I am with you always." Something to remember, He is with us always. We're not alone. We're in this together. We are building a new faith community for all of the Carbonell area. This is our role to build this new community. This is our role to build this new mission and give it direction and force and the air that we need to blow the ship in the right direction, to share that great mystery of God. We're going to continue to serve the poor. We're going to continue to serve those who are in need around us. We're going to continue to serve the elderly, who are in great number here in our community. We're going to continue our bereavement ministry and outreach to those who suffer great loss. We're going to work and try to engage with youth and young adults and family ministry, part of a new directive as we move forward after next year. And we're going to work on new ministry. We're going to work on continuing the mission of Jesus Christ. We're going to work sharing that love, building those disciples that we all are by virtue of our baptism. And we're going to do it together. We're going to do it with and for one another to help one another, to aid one another, and to be there with one another. In the joy and in the sorrow, the pain and the happiness, everything in between, we will be with each other in prayer. We will be with each other in love. We will be with one another as our community of Jesus Christ. So that's what I have for you. I know it was a lot. I know that a lot has taken place here tonight. A lot has taken place over this past year, over this past couple of months. I understand that. And I understand that there are a lot of emotions. There is sadness. There is grief that needs to happen. I grieve too. I grew up here with my grandmother. When I was reading the history of St. Michael's, I have the 100th Anniversary Book in my desk. Somebody was kind enough to drop one off for me. Though I learned something that I did not know, that the Woznok family would be my, I believe, my grand, great, great something, grandparents or uncles, were the house that the priest stayed in when they traveled between Carbonell and Fort City. And Larry Woznok was the first sacristan here paid at St. Michael's Church. So I feel, I grew up here, you know this. It's hard. There's no other word. It's sad. And what if this or what if that? Yeah, we can always go into those things. But here we are. This is what we have. We're surrounded with one another in love. And we're here to engage one another. Yes, I wish I can go back and make all these other people come to church. Yes, I wish I can go back and move this around or do this differently and do that. But what we can do is help provide for the future. We can help look to the future to say, how will we build the community here for the next 100 years? And you are the foundation for that. You are the foundation to embrace the love of God and bring and continue the faith here in Carbonell, the 18407 and Simpson and its surrounding areas. It's our turn. It's our job now. Just as your grandparents and my grandparents and great grandparents put their blood, sweat and tears into the buildings, it's our turn to put our blood, sweat and tears into the community and parishes to share the love of Jesus Christ moving forward with our new parish community. So now, we'll sit for a moment. I'll move the microphone forward. Just because we're recording, I'm going to ask if you have a question, please come up here, talk into the microphone. I'm going to sit right there, then I'm going to get up and answer the question. I just invite you, if you're going to come up, please come up one at a time. I don't want to have a big line over here or anything like that. In that way, we can address everyone and everyone can hear the questions properly. Is that okay? Okay, good. So again, I don't expect everyone to have everything memorized up there. I've been working with this for a long time. We've had the parish councils and the finance councils been working for this for months. So some of the stuff is like, you'd be like, how does he rattle those things off his head? I've seen a lot of it, okay? So again, there'll be time. It'll be put up on the website. The PowerPoint will be put up where you decide here. This recording will be put up as well so that if you want to go back and watch this again. In the bulletin this weekend, we'll have a two-page summary of the process that we've engaged in since last year. And those phases kind of put together easily that you can see in one glance, not with big check marks and, you know, all those kinds of things. All in one small area. And then we will have continued information coming forward. You know, I gave a bit of a broad timeline. I'm not looking at trying to do like, okay, on September 3rd, we're going to look at this. And on September 4th, we're going to look at this. So we're kind of giving a little bit of flexibility, but a general timeline moving forward to help keep us and the parish, the 18407, the communities of faith here in Carbonell, moving forward into the future and responding to the need that we have right now. I wish we had 5,000 people, but we don't. And again, trying to respond and just be here for everyone to help them and to walk with them and to guide them. So if anyone has a question, I'm turning the microphone on now. I'm going to sit down. And then when you're finished with a question, I'll get up and respond the best that I can.
My question is twofold. Number one, I assume that the deficit that both churches are realizing now is going to be cured because St. Michael's will not have any expenses. And where's the other come from? Where's the other deficit come from? You said some of it.
Oh, I mean, yeah. I don't, I don't have like... It's just because we're recording. It's just easier. So that, some of that deficit will be, well, most of the deficit will be taken care of with that. Combining the parishes will be helping it to be taken care of. We will still need to do fundraising. We will still need to do the activities. We will still need to work together to hopefully increase and build up those types of fundraising. And then also, moving forward, we're able to do more mission and put it toward things.
Second part of the fundraising. Second part of fundraising. St. Rose has their fundraising where they have their raffles. And Mount Carmel obviously has spaghetti supper, the Easter bread, the Dolly sale, the feast. And they raise maybe $100,000 a year from those 80 to 100, those four events. Does that money stay with Mount Carmel or is that going to pot?
So that's going to, when we combine next year, that's all put together. But it's still going to cost to run the building of Mount Carmel. So that will still be, still to run the employees that are here to serve both communities, to serve the one new community. So like, it doesn't magically just go away. Some of the costs of them just go away. You know, that's the real part of it.
So the bottom line is all fundraising from St. Rose and Mount Carmel goes in one into the Little Flower Parish?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And it'll be used to, again, support all of it because when we do these things, we continue to need to support the parishes, the staff that are serving both parishes currently. And if there's no fundraising, we'll have to look at cutting other things as we move forward. It's just the reality. I don't want to do that. I, but we can't keep going further and further into debt as well. So my vision would be to have boosted fundraising, boosted community events. It's not all about money. It's about serving and having, yeah, we need some money too. Don't, don't get me wrong. But, you know, to engage in youth and young adult ministry, we would need to bring, help, have someone come in to help us with that. To engage in different services to the poor and different services to the other communities, we need to engage some volunteers. And part of it is if we, as we work together to form this new community, we'll be able to help one another. So, you know, there'd be an increase. Say we still have the Feast of Mount Carmel. Because why couldn't we? It's still, the Feast of Mount Carmel just doesn't stop being July 17th. It will always be July 17th, the church has told us. What's that? No, I, isn't the feast, oh, the feast is 16th. Okay. Feast Day, sorry. I'll be all right. So that's always every year. So, but now people from the Little Flower Parish, from St. Rose can come over and help run the stand at the feast. So we're doing this together. People from the Church of St. Rose can come over and help at the spaghetti supper. And maybe we'll form a new type of, I don't know, Night at the Raisers, just for a random thing. Maybe as a marrying society, as people from both parishes to continue to form and put forth the great mission of the church. So again, it's, it's baby steps. I understand it's going to be a little tough. It's going to be a little challenging. But this is how we move forward.
Hi, Father. First of all, very good presentation. Excellent job there. And the numbers don't lie. We know that. And I'm a proponent of St. Michael's, obviously. I was married in this church. My wife was baptized in this church. I'm just looking if there's any other possibilities that we didn't look at in terms of revenue generation. Back in the day, I worked very closely with Father Malinowski. I think he passed away in 2000, 2001. And then, 99, okay. Oh, 2009, all right. But then he retired then around there, right? And then Father Sico came in. And, and back in the day, we would run the St. Michael's picnic. And we would generate, we would net after all expenses. This is back in 2002, 2003, $50,000. You know, and that was 22 years ago. And I'm thinking now, you know, 22 years, 3% inflation, we could probably double that or get to, let's say, $90,000 a year. So I'm just... So I'm just wondering if you thought of any other options besides of, you know, just closing St. Michael's? And again, I'm partial to keeping St. Michael's open, obviously, with that. So I'm just looking at other options, that maybe we can delay this process or maybe even eliminate it in the future by generating more revenue, by having things like that. That's my question.
And thank you very much. That's a very valid, real question for the parishes of St. Rose and St. Michael's currently. The downside is, as, it's not always just about the numbers, as kind of we said. You know, when we look at, on any given weekend, let's just say, 720 people come to Mass across all four masses, right? You know, 4 o'clock, 7:30, 10 o'clock, and 11:30. That number was probably up closer to 1,200 about four or five years ago. So the pandemic hurt a lot, just people stopped coming to church. Part of it is engagement in the community of being here in the church building as well. And I understand that, you know, the church building itself is an important witness to us. But with our geographic location where we are, if, you know, I think it would be a stronger argument if we're 20 miles apart from each other, but the fact that we're kind of in a 1.5 mile radius is a hard. And then trying to look at getting away from looking at trying to maintain buildings and looking more to the mission of Jesus Christ. So that's part of it. There's a lot that goes into it. So it's not just a simple guess, cut and dry. Could we, like, look at, I've looked at several fundraising options. To run the picnic is very challenging. I'm currently working with the feast committee. It's just a lot. You know, hopefully, and a part of that is coming, as we come together for Little Flower Parish, more volunteers, more people to help, more people to engage, more people to share that great mission. So instead of trying to segment into, you know, this and that and keeping it separate, trying to bring it together. And I think having multiple things like that doesn't necessarily bring us to that connectedness. Starting to do these things together over the course of the year, and over the course of years, this is, will take time. It's not like it's going to be like a magic, a flip of a switch. And I understand that. But also, I think some of it is the reality of just our time. And 10 years ago, five years ago, was very different, and we would probably be having a very different conversation. But some of the resources, not just financially, personnel, CCD students, you know, volunteers, are just not where they used to be, and they're not there. Some people have moved away, some people have gone home to God, some people just don't come anymore. And I understand that, you know, more people may come out and help, like, an event like that. But the goal is to engage them, to bring them in to meet Jesus, and to bring them in to embrace the love of God and to share that gift with them. So again, it's something that, it's not like it's just magically, like, I didn't, we didn't think about that, we looked at that, and it's just the reality, I think, of where we are. So I completely understand, I used to work the picnic myself with my aunt and my grandmother, who are both deceased. So I'd be running the plant stand, and I don't think anybody needs that at this point of our lives. But again, so it's not, also, running a picnic is very difficult. You know, the people who, you know, it's one thing to work the stand for the night, it's another thing to plan. You know, we started planning meetings back in January for this year. And trying to get volunteers, trying to get a layout, trying to figure out things, it's very, very time-consuming. And there's just not enough of us to go around anymore. So, you know, we, we introduced a few new fundraisers, and, you know, we're going to look at introducing some more community events. I said a Night at the Races, we did the Bingo, Mount Carmel did the Bingo. But again, bringing that all together to help raise the community is very, very helpful and to share the great gifts, you know, of Jesus Christ. So that's just where we are. We did look at it, I did look at it, I really took it, we took this a lot of prayer. This does not come like out of thin air or anything like that, I think, as you know. Thank you, though, for that question.
Why was, I'm a member of Mount Carmel, why was this church chosen to be closed?
Over the other two, I mean... Sure. Some of the reality is, St. Rose, they just put $1 million into the tower. Just where we are. It was raised, they put it in, they fixed it. It's also the largest church in the Up Valley. And as things continue, I think, to tighten, we may see other places come into that. When we looked at the process that was engaged back in 2009, was called the Holiness and Mission, the original plan was to actually consolidate all into St. Rose. That changed. At that point, St. Michael's was brought in as a worship site of St. Rose, and early Mount Carmel remained as the canonical parish. It is, there's some part of canonical process that's involved in this as well. So it, it's like, it's, it's easier to not have a worship site than it is to close a complete parish, is part of the gist of that as well. But the other part is, it's very hard to delineate because St. Rose and St. Michael's have been one parish community with two worship sites, separating parishioners out, who would still belong to St. Michael's, who would still be able to belong to St. Rose. And overall, I think part of our mindset needs to focus on how do we move forward? We can be angry at the past all we want, but how do we make those steps to move forward to bring these communities together? Because it's together that we will thrive. If it's, if we're alone, Mount Carmel will close in a couple of years as well. Just sheer fact. The, the numbers don't lie on that part of it. There just will be no one left to do the things. There'll be no one left to do that. So part of trying to establish the new parish is bringing things together and trying to combine our resources, trying to combine the size of St. Rose and St. Michael's, people-wise, with the fundraising ability and the community-orientedness of Our Lady of Mount Carmel, and putting them together to have this one parish, our Little Flower. That's some of the decision. Some of the decision was building cost. Mount Carmel is less to maintain as a worship site. So basically, what would happen is, if we consolidated, when we consolidate, we, Little Flower Parish would have three worship sites in a matter of 1.5 miles, give or take, right? So then it comes down to a little bit of a number thing to say, well, the most expensive building to keep is actually St. Michael's Church. That is in fairly good shape, but will need almost $1 million worth of work over the next 10 years. Partly, we live at St. Rose. Did we look at an option of moving up to St. Michael's and demolishing the rectory at St. Rose? Yes, we did. It was a real option. Did we look at buying a house somewhere in Carbondale and collapsing the rectory? But when we ran the numbers, when we looked at all of that as a matter of support, it came back to being more actually, or right about the same, as putting the money into the rectory of St. Rose, where the priests live and where the office is, than trying to go out and move these things around. So on that part of it, some of it came down to dollar and cents, but also, it came down to a community aspect and canonical parish status. That was, you know, more of it, again, there's more that underlies a lot of this, but that's the general gist of that. Okay? And again, so we don't think we're in a vacuum up here. Immaculate Conception, these were announced a couple of days, a few days ago. Immaculate Conception in Scranton is, Father McLaughlin is retiring in July, the cathedral is being linked with Immaculate Conception in Scranton with one pastor, Father Tudgay. Dunmore, St. Mary's and St. Anthony's in Rocco's, Father Doris is being, is retiring. So Father Capelloni is taking over both linked parishes. The west side of Scranton, the fashionists are no longer going to be at the governance of St. Anne's Basilica. Father Paisley is taking over in September, and there is more conversation of what will be happening with the other churches there. I think they're having some meetings as we speak. Another friend of mine, Father Kuhar, is in south side of Scranton. They have two communities, Nativity Our Lord and Sacred Heart, that's a church, but it's, St. Paul of the Cross is the actual parish name. They are going through a similar process that we are going through now. Father Kuhar and I have been working very closely, we're moving, moving the process forward, telling the people, talking to them, grieving with them. So this is not happening just here. This is happening throughout the diocese. This is happening throughout the Northeast, you know? So it's not just here. But again, arguably, could we go on for a few more years and try this and try that? And then when people leave or go home to God, we're going to come to the same reality. I wish it was different. I really prayed and I really wished it was different. But it's hard to not respond to what we see. And remember, like, you all look at me, I look out. And do I see, have I seen a great increase of people? Absolutely. But we want to keep that ball rolling. And this is a way to embrace and to keep that ball rolling on our terms. Not somebody coming in, in, you know, a year or two, or three or four, and saying, okay, next month, this building and this building are closed, and you're all going here. So yes, some of this is ahead of the curve. Somebody said, well, is there like a way of, like a playbook to do this? Father Kuhar and I are basically writing the playbook on how to do these things right now with the diocese's help. Will the bellwether states, if you would? So are there going to be mistakes? Yes. Are we going to learn from them? Yes, we are. Are we going to try to engage and do better? I don't want to close anything. I don't want to have to worry about these things. Again, I didn't become a priest to worry about this. But this is what has been given here right now. This is how we are responding. Remember, I've been here for a year. This is how we are responding to our situation. This is how we are responding to what we have before us. You don't like it, it's uncomfortable, I get that. I feel just as uncomfortable as you are. But we have a responsibility. We have a responsibility through the gift of our baptism to help one another, to love one another, and to share and be a disciple of Jesus Christ, not of a building, but of our Lord. Yes, we need the building because we need to gather, we need to pray for one another, we need to support one another, we need to help one another. But we also, as I say an awful lot, we need to go out and bring Christ to others by how we live, by how we love.
So I guess my first comment is, everybody knows from Mount Carmel that I am leaving, and I probably shouldn't open my mouth, but this is my home, this is where I was born, this is where I was raised, this is where I went to school. Has the diocese thought about, and I know this isn't a question, but has the diocese thought about what to do to bring our youth back into the community? Because as you look out here, there's very little youth. It is, it is everybody in my generation and older, and putting three kids through Catholic school, making enemies with my public school friends because I touted Catholic school and Catholic education, has the diocese thought about what they're going to do to change their thinking going forward?
I can't put myself in the place of the diocese here, but, well, there are some members of the diocese here. Part of our ongoing conversation of also, as you saw, the youth and the young adult was on that, moving forward, well, there was, they were in no order. Yeah, it was the last slide, because that's how we're going to move forward. That was just my consciousness as we were running through these things. That is very close, near and dear to my heart, to bring in a family minister, to work with young families, not just young adults or young, young people, but young families. I think it's a great need in our church today to provide that support for those young families to say, you know, yeah, we're going to have a movie night and watch something, we're going to do a Bible study, we're going to plan this, and we're going to plan that. But it, some of it takes time and some of it takes resources. And if we're constantly running from building to building to building to worry about this and that, that's where it becomes exhausting and we can't move forward. Part of these, the revenue moving forward of that, you know, seeing the plus, the positive of a little bit more revenue and cash on hand, is to eventually look to hire, put someone in a position to really engage in family ministry, Bible study, young adult ministry, summer Bible camp, those kinds of things. Working with Mrs. Yaklick, our current DRE, who just retired from, after all of these so many years, I know she's over here somewhere, there she is over there, and God bless her, seriously. We'll have more time to engage in that as well now with her. We've already had several conversations of bringing new, a few new things. We have a beautiful screen now, so have a movie night. And, you know, something she just wrote, which really struck me, during the Christmas season, do a little like hot cocoa movie night, let the parents go do their Christmas shopping. Something very practical, but again, bringing that community in. Yes, it's very close and near and dear to my heart, that particular mission, because we're the future, we're the right now as well, my generation, I'm a little bit younger than you, not by much, though. But again, it's engaging and continuing to have the support of the parish community to do that. And I think Father Cyril, our vicar and chaplain of Holy Cross, wants to say something as well.
As the Episcopal vicar, I speak to the bishop. We're meeting with the bishop tomorrow, as will be Amory and Eric and Dominic. But first, he deserves a tremendous round of applause for the hard work that he has done here. He does. He does. You asked the right question. How many people here are under the age of 40? And there is the answer. So that money that is coming in to keep the bills open, in 10 years, how many of us will still be here? You know, if, we're talking about West Scranton on Wednesday night, the number of people in West Scranton who attend church can all fit into one mass, one mass. That's at a big church, my church holds 1,000, they could probably all fit in my church in North Scranton. They're not coming, you got to be very honest, they're not coming. Your children might not be coming. And my whole family, they're not coming, and they're not going to start coming. We, we have a problem making universal truths work with the crazy lives of young people. We have a problem making universal truths work with the crazy lives of young people. We have a huge, and he didn't say it, but who knows how much damage was done by the grand jury report. It is said that until we are dead, the impact of the grand jury report will not go away. We gave them a reason not to come to church. It was from pages of Scranton Times on Sunday. You all saw it. We have, if you think that his presentation tonight means, "Well, unless I belong to St. Michael's, everything's okay," no, it's not. Business as usual is not working. Like, you need to call, not him, but someone needs to call every, I have six churches merged into one. Hardest thing I've ever done. I've been a priest a long time. Three of them were spent here. Enjoyed every second. You got to be on the phone with every single person from St. Michael's saying, "I bet you're disappointed your church is closing. How can we help you transition so that you go to either St. Rose or Mount Carmel, and you maintain connection with your Catholic faith?" Who's going to do that work? Who's going to reach out to people who aren't coming? Who, if they have a soccer game on Sunday morning, that's where they're going to go. They're not going to church, they're going to go to soccer game. Happens every single... We're finishing second and third. That didn't happen when I was a kid. There was no baseball game with T-ball on Sunday. Now there is, and they're going to go to that. We face a huge, these numbers are not, they're indicative of the problem. They are not the problem. We are losing traction every day. Every day. Every day I get a call, "I want a sponsor card." "When did you last go to church?" "Ah, 20, 30." "I was baptized there." Does that make you a practicing Catholic? He deals with this every day, don't you? Every day. How many people do you see in their 20s in any of these three buildings? They're not coming. Now, movie night might help. Yeah, grab that young family. You just mentioned a number of good ideas. But, you know, sometimes these meetings get very raucous and crazy. I was sitting over thinking, "Well, maybe it could be home in my home parish." This has been a great discussion. Your questions have been very good. Ask more. I'll answer what he can't. Actually, we meet with the bishop tomorrow morning. I'm sure his first question's going to be, "Well, how did it go in Carbondale?" This was, you were all very calm. His presentation was excellent. A lot of work went into this. Brother Mosley, Deacon at the area will be part of that. So I see great hope. You have a lot of work to do. We all do. We all do. Get them to come back to church. Young people are not coming. When I go, when I see a mass, gray hair and bald heads, that's not going to work. That is not going to work. I'd be interested, because how many of you have more children than siblings? Very few. When I was a kid, every family had six and seven kids. Now they have one or two. And they don't live here anymore. They left to get better paying jobs. We face huge challenges. It's not Carbondale, it's everywhere. And the numbers he gives you assumes no priest takes a heart attack tonight. And the bishop asks, "Say, geez, I got to fill up a hole right now." Tomorrow morning, he has to fill a hole with priests that don't exist. I run all of North Scranton. Think about that. How many funerals can I do? How many funerals can these guys do? And you're running them into the ground. So we have major challenges. We have, you've done tremendous work. And I see tremendous hope. You just gave like five great ideas. But we have a lot, it's not just business as usual, not work. You would agree. It won't work. Can't do it, won't work. Your bishop, when my merger happened, I was given a tape to play at 2:00 in the afternoon. The bishop has given you many opportunities over this year, town hall meetings and individual meetings. And good for, we have the best bishop in the country. We are very blessed. You have some input here. Instead of it came down from on high. I'm still dealing with that pain 13 years later. They closed my church without even talking to me. They did. They did. That's true. Different bishop. You've been very lucky, and you've been very well receptive, very receptive here. And he's done a great job. You've done a great job. No yelling and screaming. How can we make this work? Back to you, Seth.
The wisdom figure over there, he's much older than I am, so he's done this before. Very young. Yeah, okay. I'm still going to be younger, don't worry. Any other questions?
I guess my question isn't as about money or that. My question is more, when we do become one parish, how do we represent the three churches? You know what I mean? Like, to us, the statue of Our Lady of Mount Carmel is, represents our parish. So when we go to, I'm assuming St. Rose will be the one parish site, very long time down the road, what's going to be there that represents my church? What's going to be there that represents St. Michael's? What's going to be there that represents St. Rose?
Thank you so much for that. That's an excellent question. It's something that we've thought about. Growing up in four cities proper, five parishes came to one. Father Pat Albert did a lot of work to make sure that pieces of each church were brought together. We will do very much the same. And this is just an idea. We have to see dimension. We have to see how it will work. One of the big things is behind the screen, this beautiful high altar, the rirdo's, at least part of it could be taken to St. Rose Church. We believe it will fit in the space. It will bring it down. That, I remember as a little kid, that terrifying statue of St. Michael's with the big sword poking out there, can find a spot, probably in St. Rose, just because of the size of St. Rose and the size of the statue. Event, you know, but bringing the statues are very important. Bringing the traditions are very important. It doesn't just magically go away that, you know, we're not Italian, and we're not Polish, and we're not Irish anymore. We still bring those traditions with us. And that's how we infuse that into it. And that's part of what I believe, when I say the transition team will meet for the next year, give or take, a little bit, that's what we're going to talk about. That's what we're going to have input on of getting those ideas. I make this stuff up mostly as we go along here. And, I mean, not right off the cuff here, but you know what I'm saying? Like, there's no set plan of how to move forward in the sense of what's going to work for us. Because something that works for us might not work for Scranton because of the way our communities are together. So definitely something we're going to talk about, definitely something we're going to bring. You know, it's a very real and powerful thing to do. So thank you for that question. And it's something that is very much on the forefront of our minds as well. You know, one of the other things, yeah, that's exactly, like, you know, it may not be every statue, it may not be every nook, but, you know, I just look around, I'm looking at the station of the cross. It might be something that can be brought down, you know what I'm saying? Some of it will have to be obviously evaluated. But the big thing that we really are looking at is that high altar. If not the whole thing, at least the centerpiece with the tabernacle for St. Rose, that won't fit at Mount Carmel. But it also doesn't fit aesthetically at Mount Carmel architecturally. It will fit at St. Rose architecturally, because there was one way long ago. So again, these are parts that will be talked about. These are parts that we're going to work on. So it's not like, all of a sudden, you won't see anything from any of these buildings. You'll walk in, and it'll still feel not quite like home, but it'll be home. And we'll make it our home. And that's part of the key of helping to get ourselves moving forward. Okay? Anything else? Mrs. Anne Marie Colley from the Diocese of Scranton.
I want to thank you for your question, because it resonated with me in terms of how we go forward and what that new parish looks like for us. So in working with transition teams, there would be representation from every parish involved. And it is actually through the work with the pastor and facilitators that we choose how it is that would best work for us going forward together as a team. One of the things we work at is the mass schedule, which has pretty much been done unless it would need to be reevaluated at a different point in your future. But you made me think about what we do with transition teams, so I'm grateful for that question. And one of the pieces of that team is to actually look at the strengths and the opportunities for growth that occur as we have more human resources and different opportunities to even build more wonderfully the parish life that we already love. But we name it. We name the strengths of each parish. We name the opportunities for growth. In every parish, there's always a sense of, "If we only had more people, if we only had this, we would be able to do that." And so we name all that. You name all that. I facilitate the transition teams. But you name what it is that you value as a strength, what opportunities for growth you may think would be worthy of consideration. But you always look at the traditions, so that you weave those traditions into the new parish, whatever that becomes. And we also look at the uniqueness. What makes each parish so unique? What is so valuable about your parish that you continue to want to go to be there together as a parish family? So all of that is woven into the transition team. Most transition teams take three, four, five meetings. I see and listen, hear from Father Seth, that this is going to be a longer process. And what I've learned in doing these since 2009, probably 19, is that we adapt the process to the situation. You know, we have a binder, and we hope to cover most of the bases. But as things emerge, we work with the people to create the best outcome and opportunity for you to love and thrive and truly want to build church, to continue to build church together. Any other questions that I might be able to ask in terms of the functioning, the transition team, and that coming together process? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your question.
We're about five minutes or so to eight. We've been at this since 6:30. You can always contact me at the parish office, in the street, at Frank's place, although maybe after tonight's meeting, I may just have my corner by myself. Okay, that's great. Thank you. But more than happy to have a conversation with anyone, more than happy to have a conversation and talk through, cry with, hold, hug, whatever we need to do. You can yell at me, you cannot yell at, we can have, whatever, whatever emotions we need, it'll be okay, because we're in this together. Okay? Any final questions for tonight?
I figured I'd throw you off. Not a question, but I figured since there was enough of a conglomeration of people from the three churches here to just say, "Thank you." This is a whole new area for me, new parish, new people, and you guys have been so welcoming to me. There's no doubt in my mind that I could easily see you all within these two parishes forming that one community. I mean, the kindness you showed me. If you even show a fraction of that to each other, there's no doubt in my mind, it'll be perfect. That's all I got.
Guess I owe him $20 now, don't I? All right. Well, I think the gospel that we started with is the gospel that we'll end with one more time as we go forth, always being reminded that Jesus truly is with us until the end of the age. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Once again, this is the reading from the Holy Gospel according to Matthew. "The eleven disciples went to Galilee, to the mountain to which Jesus had ordered them. When they saw him, they worshipped, but they doubted. Then Jesus approached and said to them, 'All power in heaven and on earth has been given to me. Go therefore, and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, teaching them to observe all that I have commanded you. And behold, I am with you always till the end of the age.'" The Gospel of the Lord. Praise you, Lord Jesus Christ. "In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Once again, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for the diocese and the representatives. Thank you for everyone who has worked through the process. We have a long road ahead of us, but one that we will embrace together. Okay? Have everyone have a safe trip home. We'll see you over the weekend. God bless you all.